Everyone, we have two meetings this evening. The first meeting that we're going to have is our Board of Health meeting. And before we start, would everybody rise? We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and officially call the Board of Health meeting to order, and Chris will take roll call.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway. Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Hull.
Here.
Councilmember Pope.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number eight on December 21st, 2021 as presented. Recommendation, approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 512 North Green in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Zach is going to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first meeting of the Board of Health for the new council. And so before we start the specifics on this property, I wanted to give a really brief overview of what this process is like, so that the council's familiar. So derelict property cases are cases where we are looking at enforcing the property maintenance or the housing code in the context of a property that's unsafe for habitation. And those cases are typically complaint-driven, and the inspector will issue a notice to comply and to correct housing code deficiencies. When the conditions make a property unfit for habitation, the inspector will also place a placard, which says that, you know, this property is unfit for human habitation, issue a notice to vacate, and also issue a placard notice. It's illegal for someone to occupy a placarded dwelling or a placarded building without direct permission of the Building and Code Enforcement Department, and owners of placarded properties are required to submit and complete repair plans within three or six months according to the deficiencies. When it's the opinion of the director that the property has become because of its condition, abandonment, et cetera, a public nuisance that threatens health and safety, the property is set for a hearing with the Board of Health. The Board of Health is the city council. It's the same thing, same people. It's your duty to make these decisions, and an owner or a person with property interest is invited to present evidence at a hearing of the Board of Health. If the Board of Health confirms the recommendation of the director, it would condemn the structure, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of such property, and also direct all costs attendant to that to the property or obtain some collection from the owner or owners thereof. The Board of Health, if the Board of Health determines a property should not be demolished, you're able to direct whatever actions you would deem appropriate in that situation. Are there any, maybe, starting there, are there any questions about the process before we go specifically into the property at 512 Green? Okay. The property at 512 North Green was placarded April 13th, 2018, and it's changed ownership several times since then. The Board of Health held a condemnation hearing for this property May 4th, 2021, and at that property, the Board of Health did grant a six-month, or at that meeting, the Board of Health did grant a six-month extension. On June 29th, so about two months later, Andrea Maldonado requested permission to be on the property, claiming to have bought the property on a real estate contract, and at that time, she submitted a three-month repair plan. We did give permission on July 2nd and also issued a 14-day notice to record the real estate contract or to establish some kind of property interest. And to date, Maldonado's recorded no contract or no interest in the property. And then, at the time of that June 29th request for permission, the inspector also identified that electrical work had been ongoing inside the house, which did not meet the standard of the electoral code, and for which no permit had been pulled. A licensed electrician did finally stand at inspection October 1st, 2021, and at that time, he was only standing in inspection to certify that the existing service and some of the existing circuits were safe enough to energize temporarily for work to be completed. At that point, we did give a release to the power company to allow the power to be turned back on, which means the owners would have had access to power for heat and to run tools and to make repairs during the winter inside the home. Maldonado did not appear at any inspections scheduled August 26th, November 5th, or January 6th. Maldonado did not comply with a notice to record a real estate contract or any other instrument showing property interest up to today. That's still the case. Also, Maldonado did not complete the three-month repair plan that was included in the packet. Items on that plan remain outstanding. February 16th and March 15th today, the inspector did conduct additional inspections and documented the property remains unsecured and open to the elements, and any apparent progress is stalled, and what progress was made was illegal unsupervised electrical work. There's a few pictures here to show the condition. I think I might just get to page. So this here shows a completely open window, window well where haven't been framed and siding applied on the outside, so the rain's coming right up against the drywall there. These stairs go up to the second floor unit, where the doors wide open. This shows kind of outside condition of the house, hole in the porch, those sorts of things. This is typical in the backyard debris, trying to show some issues there with the foundation that are kind of the cause here. You can also see the chimney, significant need of tuck pointing crumbling at the top And so with those outstanding issues, the repair plan having expired, it is the recommendation of staff to condemn the property and assess the cost for the demolition.
Does council have any questions for Zach?
I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of comments, because none of the other council members were present during this last meeting when this conversation was had. This was a rather contentious issue when this was discussed last May, and the council was split at the time as to whether to allow the extension to begin with. Just so the public is aware, you know, this is something that the council usually takes fairly seriously, condemning somebody's property and leveling it. But, you know, it is something that's necessary in the community to make sure that we don't have abandoned houses. They are a safety risk, both from a health standpoint and from a public safety standpoint as it stands to criminal activity. So, you know, we went out on a limb. This property has turned over several times, as Zach had mentioned, and we wanted to give the new owners a chance at that point in time, and which is something that, you know, the council usually tries to be fairly lenient on. Me personally, when I see that, you know, we did go out on a limb and try to give the owner a chance, and then they completely failed that obligation, it really doesn't do much to allow me any sympathy and leave the neighborhood in an unsafe condition.
Hey, Zach, I got a question for you. Is it true that the owner of this building lives in Illinois?
Just a second. The only address that I have for the owner of record, which is not the person who submitted the most recent repair plan, we had the hearing in May, Yahara and Juvenal Marquez owned the property. Their address locally is on East Fourth. And the Maldonado who came to us requesting permission said that they'd purchased the property from the Marquez's, has not ever recorded a real estate contract, so I don't know an address for that person. But my understanding is she also lives locally.
She also what?
Lives here local.
Okay.
None of them are here today, are they? And you're the one that purchased the property on contract?
Yeah.
Can you step up here? Can you step up the mic a minute?
Would you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Andrea. My name is Andrea Maldonado. My address is 142 Northview Avenue here in Atumwa.
So you are purchasing this property on contract?
Yeah, what we did, it was, we didn't use any attorneys or anything. We wrote a letter, you know, just with our ID number and stuff, because by that time, the owner said that we couldn't use any attorneys, because the, he came to court, and they said they couldn't sell the property, because it was, they needed to, it had to be, like, finished before he was allowed to sell the property. So we told them that we were going to take care of the property and, you know, finish it. But unfortunately, because of the winter, we couldn't finish it. It was too cold, but it is almost done, like, the outside is pretty much, because unfortunately, I couldn't bring any picture from the inside, but it's almost done, the house is locked, nobody lives there. So it is basically just bathrooms, what is leading and the floor, and then just, we'll have to take care of the outside. I was just wondering if I can have another chance. I know this house been, you know, had had several owners before, and you have given them, you know, permissions and permissions, permissions, but I promise you, this will be the last one. I have four kids, and it's just by myself. My brothers-in-law are helping me with this, and I saw this as an opportunity to have or to give my kids a better life, you know, because I'll rent this property. And the previous owner was giving me, he sold me the property, and I didn't give it, like, the entire amount, so I was given payments on that property. So I'm.
Are you related to the current owner?
No.
Okay. So here's my problem. You guys have no legal, like, you have no legal contract, just what you've written out or whatever. If we granted you an extension and you finished out this property, because you haven't legally put it into the court systems, they, you can take the house back from you.
I understand that.
So because you haven't legally put this into the court systems, I, there's nothing showing me that you own this property.
I can maybe get that letter and take it somewhere so it can be legal and have it out on my name. I can have that done by tomorrow, maybe if it's possible.
So I guess, again, I'm going to fall back onto the presentation that the Planning and Zoning Director made. There have been several attempts for, that everybody knew was part of the process. This was something that was, that was brought to light last May, that there would be need for inspections, yet all of those attempts for inspection were ignored. So I guess that's my, my big problem, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, did I hear, Zach, that no permits have been pulled for the work that has been done in the property? So I guess my, my issue, you know, we as city council and Board of Health have a responsibility to make sure things are done in a certain manner, and when those, when those items are communicated with the homeowner, and they, they stood up here the last time and said that this stuff would be done according to the rules, and none of those rules over the course of almost a year now have been followed, and we're coming back to the point again of, give me one more chance, what's to make the council believe this time that it's going to be taken care of, and in six months, we'll be right back here again saying, give us one more chance. Meanwhile, the, the rest of the neighborhood is suffering from that.
And I totally understand, but when we started working on the property, the person who was doing the inspection noticed that we did progress in very short of time, because the weather was allowing us to do it. And now I have savings that we can continue, you know, investing on that property. I understand you probably are doubting giving me another chance, but I promise, if you guys give me another, maybe three months, probably it'll be done before three months, but, you know, just in case it's not, I totally understand whatever you want to do.
But are you continuing paying this person for this property?
No, I, I finished paying already. I finished paying it already. So that's why I'm saying I can go ahead and, you know, go to maybe an attorney to have this, to have the property legally on my name. They are not bad people. I, I can tell that they are not going to take that property away from me.
But they still should have went the legal way to make sure you have that property in your name.
Yeah.
Because right now.
This is the first time that I buy a house like that. You know, I didn't know, like, the process.
So I, I just want to, I appreciate you being here tonight, and.
Yeah, once I'm finished here, I'm on my way to work.
So it, the problem is that we have to make our decision off of past. We have to look at what has happened in the past and make our decisions off of that. We can't, we don't have a magic eight ball, unfortunately. We can't tell what's going to happen in the future. And we were given, the previous council was given a word that, that this stuff would be followed. I don't think that we're going to, we're probably going to approve this recommendation, which means that we'll move forward on this, but I would like, at least if we do, to take this as a, as a learning experience and understand that there is a process that we have to follow. And by not being at these inspections and not pulling these permits, it puts us all in a hard place and a hard decision we have to make. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the council. I believe you. I think that you're going to get the work done, because you've put money into this property.
Yeah.
But the legalities of it that I see here, I just don't see it happening.
I, I promise you, it'll be done before three months. I cannot afford to lose that property. I cannot. My husband got deported two years ago, and I only have nine four kids. And honestly, I did, I saw that property as an opportunity to, you know, rent it out and have a better life for the kids.
Any other questions from council? If not, is there any other questions from anyone in the audience regarding this property? Would you come forward, sir, and give us your name and your address, please?
Mark Thompson, 10505-155th, Atumwa, Iowa. This gentleman stated that there's been a lot of previous owners that's been notified. I was just wondering what was, what the timeline was, and hoping that you don't punish her for previous owners neglect. That's all.
To answer the first question, or to answer that question first, I should say, the property, at the time it was placarded, I have to go back quite a few pages, was owned by Jacob Mathis and Shelby Dersflinger in 2018. A new owner was, at one point, Keith Morris in 2019. Randy Capote took the property from Keith Morris for a period, also in 2019. And then, looks like Yahara and Juvenal Marquez acquired the property in 2020. They did request an extension, and then, within less than two months, instead sold the property, apparently on real estate contracts, hasn't been recorded, to Ms. Maldonado. Obviously, you know, the decision's up to the council. Right now, the property, the doors are open on the second floor. There's a window out on the first floor. It is not secured. It was not secured a month ago. I don't believe it was secured in between those two inspections. The work that's been done, you can see there where the window was reframed, and the drywall's just exposed on the backside to the elements. It's been that way for months. The work that's been done is already going to have to be redone. I feel very bad about this situation. I think that Ms. Maldonado should pursue any way that she can to get the money back on this property. I don't think the representations that were made to her when she bought it were accurate or fair, but, I mean, it's, it's very clear that by the standard of the code, the condemnation recommendation is the one that we should follow.
Zach, were the three last inspections that nobody showed up for, was she made aware of those? Was she the current owner at the time of those three inspections?
Let me just check the notices to, to be sure. So we did post those notices on the property and mailed them to the address that we had, which was the address for this property. The issue of deed title contract was raised as far back as July 2nd of last year. We asked for, we gave a 14-day notice to record that contract. I, I don't know. It's, it's unfortunate that it hasn't been recorded. I, you know, you can say they're good people. I'm not so sure that the previous owners aren't the only ones that come out okay in this scenario.
Thank you. If there's not any other questions for Zach or no other questions from the audience, I go ahead and ask for a motion from the council to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 512 North Green, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation, approve the condemnation of the structures located at 512 North Green.
Is there a motion to approve the condemnation of 512 North Green?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
I just have, sorry, just one last question. The legal owner of the property is not the individual in the audience. The legal owner of the property is the, the prior person, right?
Right, Yahara, Juvenal Marquez.
These, these tax, or these costs will be associated to the legal owner of the property.
They'll be assessed to the property's taxes.
Right, which is the legal owner of the property?
Unless the legal owner of the property records a completed contract tomorrow, then the legal owner of the property would change.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Chris will take the roll now.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope. This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures of the property located at 250 South Ward in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open this public hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to do the presentation on this property also. Okay.
It's putting me in. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The property today that we're looking at is 250 South Ward. This property was placarded on August 27th, 2020. The department had no contact with the property owners, with the property owners until an inspection on March 30th, 2021. A six-month repair plan was submitted on April 21st, 2021. Since that, that time, the department has handled nuisance issues with junk in the yard and tall grass. The owner has failed to appear for some inspections. Zach, you might have to help me with those. Bam, did it just right there. On October 28th, 2021, inspections, the inspector noted that some of the interior work had been done, some clean had been done, but the progress that was listed on the repair plan, nothing had happened in that case, and that the water damage and foundation issues had worsened. At this time, some code violations persist on the property. The condemnation notice was served, certified mail and posting on the property and in the Atumwa Courier. It's the recommendation of the staff to condemn the property and assess the costs. And then there's a couple of pictures, if I can get to them here. And this is pictures of the property itself. You can see those boarded up, they've been neglected. You can also see the nuisances in the yard. Here's broken windows, and you can also see the bad foundation in the second picture there. So it's still open to the elements at this time.
You said they did, they did submit a repair plan for this property?
They did. It was submitted in April 21st, 2021, so just about a year ago. And the last inspection that the inspector was on, there was nothing done that complemented the repair plan. And these pictures are from today, so this is the current state.
Does council have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding 250 South Ward? If not, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 250 South Ward, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation, approve the condemnation of the structures located at 250 South Ward.
Do we have a motion to approve the condemnation of 250 South Ward?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures of the property located at 126 North Davis in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Turn it over to you again.
All right, thank you. So this is property at 126 North Davis, was placarded July 23rd, 2021. Both the contract buyer and the deed holder from this property have stated to the inspector that they considered the property abandoned. The city has had to mow the property, and it remains open to the elements, and there's also a couple of occasions where squatters have been on the property. At this time, several code violations persist on the property, and the condemnation notice was served, certified mail, posting on the property, and in the Atumwa Courier. And this is current, these pictures were today also, so you can see that it's still open to the elements, nuisance issues, and broken windows, and also the roof's falling in on this one. So the staff recommends that we condemn this property and assess the costs.
I guess my question is, are we planning on putting up houses and everything that we're turning down?
Well, that would be a great plan, yeah. We would love that to happen. So there, there are a lot of steps going towards filling infilled lots, but you have to get rid of stuff like this in a neighborhood to make it more attractive to fill infilled lots as well, so.
Any other questions from council? Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding this property? For the record, can you come up and give your name and address, please?
I'm not quite tall enough, but I speak.
You can pull it down.
Thank you. What a nice gentleman. I'm Alice Richardson. I live at 1509 Swanson Avenue. We have nice neighbors there. And is it possible to find out who owns this property and the property just previous to this one that the council's talking about? Thank you for letting me ask.
So according to the records, as of right now, 126 North Davis is registered to a Tracy Herb Dow and a Judith Ann Martz, and 250 South Ward is recorded to a Roy E. Henry.
Any other comments from anybody? If not, I would ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 126 North Davis, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 126 North Davis.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
If there's no other business, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Atumwa Porta Health meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move into our city council meeting. You ready? And I'm going to call this meeting to order, and Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway? Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda: Minutes from regular meeting number eight on March 1st, 2022, as presented. Approve the updated salary schedule as presented. Approve the lease agreement for the Atumwa School District for the Big Baseball Diamond from March 21st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. Resolution Number 672022 approving the contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance for the Pawnee Drive Reconstruction Project. Resolution Number 822022 setting April 5th, 2022 as the date for a public hearing for the purpose of considering a lease agreement between the city of Atumwa and AV Fuel Corporation. Beer and/or liquor applications for Matt Avenue Quick Shop at 405 South Madison Avenue, Pizza Head at 1247 Theater Drive. All applications pending final inspections.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Now I'd ask for approval for tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
And next, we'll have the city administrator report from Phil Rath.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor. So this is a continuation of our discussion about the American Recovery Plan Act dollars and where we are looking at designating those by the end of this month. Last meeting, we had TJ Heller and Brian Morgan here talking about a specific project. At that time, I'd also asked, and tonight was the availability for Mary Margaret from her request for Whatsoever You Do. Just a quick recap, for the American Recovery Plan Act dollars, the city has been awarded one, little over $1.8 million for this year, which needs to be designated by the end of this month and then spent by the end of next year. And then we receive another $1.8 million in the following year under those same terms. So a total of about a little over $3.6 million. Kind of encompassing with this, we had passed, Mayor and myself had a public hearing or a public meeting and invited comments. We also received some things solicited to the city by written. And there were several dozen comments in general, including the comments from the public and also things that staff had identified as projects that were eligible or could be considered eligible under the Recovery Plan Act dollars. Kind of blurred in with that is also some of the requests that we had for the recent bond issue that was discussed at the last couple of meetings that we've had. And so kind of one of the things we have to look at as a council is what projects we would look to include in the bonding that were requested there and which ones we may want to have as part of the Recovery Plan Act dollars that would not have to be repaid but have certain other restrictions and qualifications under the federal funding. So this is one program that could be eligible for the federal funding that would maybe not be eligible for the bonding that the city would do and was not included in that list for the bonding. So tonight is an opportunity for Mary Margaret to present her request officially and then give the council an opportunity to ask any questions. You're not being asked to make a final decision on that tonight. You can definitely provide any guidance to staff that you want to following that presentation. And in the next week or two, at the latest, we'll be finalizing that by resolution or asking the council to finalize our decisions for this year's funding. And then there's still, like I said, the additional second-year funding as well, so. With that said, I will invite Mary Margaret to come forward and make her presentation a couple of minutes and then open it to any questions that the council may have.
Just for the record, would you please restate your name, your address, and the agency that you're speaking on behalf of tonight?
I am Mary Margaret Butler. My address is 517 Burr Street in Atumwa, and I'm with Wapalo, I'm with Whatsoever You Do.
I'm Ken LaRue. I live at 2002 Greenwood with Whatsoever You Do.
Leslie LaRue, 2002 Greenwood Drive, Atumwa, with Whatsoever You Do.
So you're all board members, correct? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials, city administrators, and city staff, I would like to first thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come forward and speak to you today on behalf of Whatsoever You Do. With me today is Leslie LaRue, our WYD Inc. Board President, and Kenny LaRue, our Buildings and Ground Manager, and also the gentleman that oversees our construction on the shelter. My name is Mary Margaret Butler, CEO, founder of the nonprofit Whatsoever You Do, Inc., which was incorporated 11 years ago and has become a nonprofit as of 2016. We are a Christian nonprofit made up of individuals, churches, and organizations coming together to help those less fortunate in our community by living the words of Christ when he said, "Whatsoever you do, for the least of my brothers, you do unto me." In the past 11 years, we have been an online network which helps with basic needs, and we have helped hundreds, if not thousands, of people. As you may know, according, I believe you have packets that we handed out. We have packets here. We, our main concern, main focus, is the WYD Inc.'s Emergency Women and Children Shelter, which is going to be located at 105 South Iowa Avenue in Atumwa. If you've been following us, you know that we have been renovating that, and it used to be the Old East End Presbyterian Church, if you're wondering where that's at. I would like to first give you a little, a quick overview of why this project is so very important to our community. And then I will let Kenny and Leslie give you a little bit more information on numbers and information regarding the building. WYD Inc. is, on a daily basis, receives phone calls, messages from individuals, groups, churches, hospitals, sometimes from the police station, wanting help for an individual that's homeless and that needs a place to stay. During last summer's pit count, which is a point-in-time count, which gives you a picture of how many people in a specific area is homeless, we counted, along with Blessings Soup Kitchen, we talked to over 74 people that day, within that 24 hours, that were homeless. Now, I'm going to back up here and say that that's just a drop in the bucket of what, who's actually homeless or is experiencing homelessness in this community. Per our research and contact with the homeless, we are estimating there's approximately 300, and it could be up to 400 and even more people in this community that are homeless, that are bouncing from one couch to the next. They're living in, they're living illegally, a lot of them, in placarded houses, many in cars, in camps in the woods, under bridges, and I can go on forever because they're in many, many places. One of the big red flags in this community that many people are not aware of is the high number of enrolled Atumwa school students, K through 12, that are counted as homeless and displaced. This last year, this past year, we had over 180 students that were enrolled, that were homeless, that were displaced. I got that information from the school board themselves, the school system. There are also many reasons that people are homeless. We know a lot of them. Homeless is caused by social or economic situations. Sometimes it's a poor choice or are not having resources available to you. We, of course, are not taking the place of the Family Crisis Center here in Atumwa. Their main concern is abused individuals, but we will be able to help them when it comes to people that are non-volatile, that someone's not chasing them. We'll be able to help them in those situations, and we'll also be able to help them if they have an overflow, as long as that person doesn't bring danger to our shelter. We can, we send men and women, single men and women, to Des Moines or Iowa City, but we don't like to because it's kind of not a good idea to be burdening another community with the problems that we face in our community. We don't want them sending them all here. We don't want us to be sending them all there. But there are, we got to make it clear to you that there are no emergency shelters in southeast Iowa. There is one shelter that opened up in Burlington recently. I think it has 10 to 14 rooms. But you can imagine with all the homeless people in southeast Iowa, that's really a very small place to house a lot of people. We are going to be sending them. One thing I want to make it clear is that we cannot send women and children to Des Moines, and that's why we are working first project with women and children. Des Moines has two walk-in shelters. Men and women can go there, but if you have children, you cannot go walk into a shelter. There is no walk-in shelters up there. There are special shelters for families, but you have to go through an intake center. And that's why we don't put them on a bus, because once they step off that bus at night, they're going to be walking the streets. And with human trafficking so rising all the time, we don't want people like children and moms to be in that position. Because we have no options, a day doesn't go by where we're not facing a mom or our family member facing an emergency need. We have found women freezing in cars, sitting outside in a parking lot with their children, revving up their engine, trying to stay warm. We have found people in placarded houses with no heat. We have found, we even found a couple living in a chicken coop last year in the, on one of the coldest days of the year. What do you do when there's no places to send any kids and moms? What do you do? When you're the last one they call, which WYD usually is, and they're calling and they're crying because they have nowhere to go, it's late at night, how do you tell them that you have no help for them? And I can't tell you how many times all of us that are working on this have went to bed with tears in our eyes because we don't know what to do with these women and these children that are alone. So, you know, we see a lot of talk when it comes to transitional supportive housing, housing first, and low-rent housing. And we understand Atumwa absolutely needs more housing. But don't get me wrong, these are important issues, but they are not immediate fixes when someone's in trouble. There is a point in time, a time on this timeline, there is one area from the moment that person becomes homeless until they find a place that we are not helping. There is nothing going on in this town to help people that emergency time, that emergency situation. During that time, there's a lot of red tape for that person. That person may need to get a job. That person may need to raise money for a deposit or have money for first month, first month, last month rent. People just can't have that when they're homeless. And the thing about women, they also have to have daycare if they have a job. And the most important thing is they have to be self-sufficient before they even get into a home or a house. And I mean, what good is it going to do to put someone into a house, a housing unit, where they don't have the tools, they don't have the knowledge or the means to stay there and be sufficient? And what will happen, and we see it every day, is we get somebody into a house, and they don't have those tools, and they're right back out on the streets in a month because they just don't have the tools to do that. And moms and caretakers are facing a mountain that they cannot even try to climb because they're in survival mode when they're homeless. And people, a lot of times, do not understand what that's like to be in survival mode. You don't have the time to think about jobs. You don't have the time to worry about getting jobs because all you're worried about is where your kids are going to stay, where you're going to stay, where you're going to get food. It's a horrible situation. Well, that hole in that timeline is what WYD is going to try to fill. We plan on having a place where they can get back on their feet, where they can think clearly and are able to work in ways where they can become a functioning member of our community. When the shelter's finished, we hope to be able to house 75 to 100 clients. We will have programs to help them become self-sufficient, and we will give them the tools to make it on their own. One thing, we will absolutely not be a glorified flop house for those who do not want to work or try to become self-sufficient. The length of stay will be determined by that individual and their needs and the ability to do the things they need to become self-sufficient. That may mean taking classes. That may mean learning skills, job searching. But we also are going to be working with organizations in town like the Atumwa Crossings, formerly known as Bridges Out of Poverty, which has been tested in Burlington and has had great success. So that's one of the programs that we're going to be looking into. We will have rules and guidelines. And those who do not want to cooperate will basically have to hit the road because we expect people to give as much as we give back. And if they want to change their life, they can. And we will help them, but they have to want it and want to work for it. We will also be an emergency warming and cooling center and an emergency location for the city of Atumwa and for the county in case we have a large emergency in our city, in our area. We will have the ability to be open during the night hours, and we'll have a volunteer trained staff to assist. And we will work with the Wapalo County Emergency Management in getting people a place to stay. Now, when we do this, this is going to be in the sanctuary part of our shelter, which will be closed off and locked from the area where the women and children stay. So in this situation, men and women can come in to stay warm or go there when it's too cold, when it's too hot, or be there in case of an emergency for the city. That's the only time that men will be allowed to ever be there overnight in our shelter. Right now, there are no places in this town, in this, in this community, to go at night to stay. And it would be really nice to know that something will be in place if a situation like an emergency happens and that we don't have to go around searching everywhere to find someone to bring all these people in for an emergency. And we will be there for the city and for the county if that happens. The reason we are here tonight is asked for funding from this American Rescue Plan money to help us push forward on our construction so that we can open sooner. We were greatly affected by the pandemic. We had fundraisers canceled, mandates and lockdowns, which put halt on some of our contract construction, and getting volunteers to help. And then this continuing rises of prices of labor and material, along with higher utility costs, have really kind of put us back on our timeline of getting done. We're back almost a year and a half. We would have been done sooner if we had not been able to have all this, had to fight all this going on. We would like to request a funding of $100,000 to help us on the current phase of the construction. I don't have to tell you that WYD has a large following, and many, many people have reached out and spoken out on the need for the emergency solution for these people that need help. We see lots of talk on social media, in meetings, and on the news. Yes, talk is important, and it's a start, but there comes a time when we have to commence action and get the ball rolling to make the changes that really make a difference in our community. There's no excuse for a community this size to not have an emergency shelter. We are in this for a long haul, and we want to take care of our unfortunate citizen, and we need to help them. With the mess our economy is in right now, you are going to see more and more people who are going to become homeless. With the high cost of utilities, groceries, and gas, you're going to see more and more people on limited and fixed incomes losing their homes. As a community, we need to face this situation and do what we can to help those that can't help themselves. And through my research, I have seen similar communities, some even smaller than us, that have actually had successful shelters, and we know it can be done, and WYD is going to do it. And we would like to ask the city of Atumwa to join us in this mission along with the other great organizers, organizations that we have helping us. Your financial assistance in making this undertaking a success would be greatly appreciated. I know you guys have a lot of requests, and it's going to be really hard to pick and choose. I wouldn't want to beat you. But keep in mind, this will be a great blessing for our community, especially for the moms and the kids struggling on a daily basis who have no idea where they are going or where they're going to sleep tonight. And I'll let these guys take over. Thank you.
I just need to say that the packet, if you look at it, there's fact, the figures that we have there, projected costs and how we're going to cover those for the first year of our projected um, costs and how we're going to cover those for the first year of operations. And I put in a letter of explanation in there as to how I came up with those numbers since we've, don't have anything like that in our area. And so if there's any questions, there's also a couple of letters from some supporters that couldn't be here tonight.
I got a question. I haven't read the letter yet because we just, we just got this. But I'm on the page where it said projected operations budget. Is that the page you was talking about?
Yes.
Now, is this a monthly or yearly?
This is yearly.
Okay. What, what plan, if any, do you guys have once it's up and running? How are you going to have this money yearly to keep it open?
If you look at the income, that's what that income would be. We work off of donations and we get grants and there's grants out there to help with things, food, things like that, work with the food bank.
Salaries.
South, yeah, they'll pay any salaries if we need to hire professionals to do anything. Um, we are, I mean, those are things that are covered that way.
But your, your total income, $267,200, is that the total income you're expecting to have once you get open?
That's what we're expecting projected from what we have received over the last two years. As far as things that grants, um, donations, things like that, fundraisers.
But I assume all, some of that's already been expended, right? Some of that's already been spent.
To carry on forward. We'll still carry on the donations, the fundraisers, things like that to help with that. Plus the grants and programs, there's programs out there, fund portions like the food and things like that, so.
So on your paper that talks about construction only of $347,167.50, that's how much money you still need to finish building it out, correct?
Yes, that's to finish all the levels and the sanctuaries.
And so you're wanting 100,000 from the city. Where's the other $247,000 going to come from?
Just like we've been doing donations and grants and fundraisers. Um, how much have we spent so far?
About $350,000.
We dropped in close to 400,000.
400,000 already we've spent. It takes a lot to take an old building and fix it up, new wiring. And of course, we had to upgrade all the systems, all the plumbing. Um, it was a big open church. We had to, we actually made another level on our floor. Um, and so, yeah, that's a lot of, but we've done it through people donating, through grants, through fundraisers. We've been out working to get that money.
So in a different aspect of of looking at this, um, so W Y D purchased a vacant building. So, you know, there's one vacant building, you know, that was off from, you know, sitting, just sitting there. Um, this building was first constructed in 1899. Um, it's got some beautiful history, um, great architecture and it's very solid. So first thing we did was we put a new roof on it. And uh, then we acquired a local architect and we got some drawings and then we hired a local general contractor. Then he hires local contractors. And through there, we buy materials local and we put money back into this community uh, when we're doing this. And one of the last projects that we just completed uh, is the entire building is sprinkled uh, for fire protection. So, you know, this building is going to be there for many years to come. Um, there's no money owed on this building. Everything is bought and paid for as we go. So, you know, it'll be in W Y D possession um, for the life, you know, of of W Y D.
So I just have one quick question and you're going to have to forgive me. The, the accountant in me is going to come out for just a second. Um, having overseen a, a facility that that housed multiple people 24 hours a day, three meals a day. Um, uh, just looking at the numbers Mary Margaret gave here, 75 to 100 clients. Basing that on your projected budget here, uh, just going on the low end of 75 clients. Uh, if you had that all day, every day, uh, you're looking at uh, housing folks for $6 a day. That I'm assuming is inclusive of meals. Uh, how, I guess, how would you possibly do that?
Well, if you purchase food from the food bank, which we'll be able to set up and do that, um, you actually can get five meals for $20.
Okay.
So plus we will have a garden area because we do own a, another lot that's vacant. So we will have a garden area and we'll have food from that. Plus we have people that donate food to us.
Okay.
So.
So that's part of it. I, I guess, uh, I'll just cut to the chase. Um, I, I
I took, I contracted. I have contacted other facilities, um, and not from this area. I have reached out across the country. And these numbers have come out with programs that they have because there's programs pay for food, which I did not project into that because I don't know what, you know, how much the programs are exactly for those. But it figured out to be $6 a day is what they were operating on. The government says you can do it for $25 a day. And that's without like our garden and donations.
Okay. Do you folks have, um, you've got a budget here. What I don't see included in here is your, your strategic plan, your sustainability plan going past year one. Do you folks have that at all?
Not till we're up and running so we know what we're doing. But, you know, we have God behind us, so that's how we've operated. We, we're going to, what we're going to do is, um, we have a lot of followers and a lot of people donating. So we know that we're going to be, we're going to have a good chance of having food all the time. I have to turn food down right now, always, constantly. We have, um, we are going to be getting, working toward a grant to have um, solar paneling so we don't have to worry, worry about electric, electricity. Because we're looking down the long road to see how we can bring things down. Um, we are um, doing our best. I meant, we have a lot of people coming forward, a lot of churches are wanting to help us come in and volunteer. So we'll have, if we can do what we, we're getting ready to have a church tour and hope that they can come in and spend certain weeks where it's their turn to take care of it. So this is going to be a community project. This is not just us sitting there trying to get money to run this. This is a lot of people coming together. And um, it's hard to project when you have a, a, something like this because we really don't know. We don't know what's going to be the cost of things. We don't know, I mean, right now with everything going up, we just don't know. So I meant, after the first year, we can give you even a better idea of what, what's it's going to be. But like she, like Leslie said, um, we're going on the wing of God. We, we have come this far. We, it is unbelievable how much money people have been donating and helping us. And we're not going to quit. I mean, we're going to do what we can to make this work. We have, none of us are being paid at this moment. I've been doing this for 11 years, W Y D, I haven't received a cent. And it's because I believe in this and I know this is going to work. I see it working for other places and I know it's going to work. We don't know all the answers, but we trust in God that he's going to help us. And a lot, a lot of people think that's kind of crazy, but you know what? Not for us, it isn't because we've already seen many, many miracles happen already. And um, I know that you don't want to hear about miracles, but you're going to hear them when it comes to W Y D because there is tremendous amount of miracles that's been happening with us every single day. So I meant, so that's about as I could tell you.
I do have one, one other question and and I just want to preface all this with saying I very much appreciate uh, what you, what you guys are doing. Um, I've sat in on some of the homeless coalition uh, meetings. I, I know that Atumwa rivals Des Moines for the number of homeless people that we have. Uh, we have, uh, we are one of the highest areas in the state for uh, uh, victims of abuse, primarily women and children. So I'm, I'm very, very sensitive to that. I, um, so I applaud you for what you're doing. My question though is, um, I also know a bunch of other data in the community as well. Um, primarily that, that Atumwa and Waplo County also leads the state in substance abuse and uh, mental health uh, conditions. And some, if not a lot of the, the problems that would be the, the folks that are, that are going to use this facility would probably fall into a category of either they themselves or somebody in their household would, would be suffering from either mental health or substance abuse of some sort. Um, so with that being said, um, I, I know that you, these are your words here. Uh, we've received a lot of requests, yes, we have. Um, and traditionally, uh, the, the council has taken the position where we don't fund uh, nonprofit groups with taxpayer dollars. So uh, just throwing, just throwing that out there just as a matter. But um, and then this is why we haven't done it. Um, because of the volume of the requests that we're getting now. And uh, my question to you is, and the sales pitch part of this because I, I feel as though you're, you're a fairly good salesperson. Um, you know, if, if we uh, voted to approve $100,000 to you, I can absolutely promise you, there'll be at least five other agencies walking in the door asking for $100,000, all of which are uh, doing the services that are in most cases, the precursor to coming to your facility. Um, and that they would say, well, you know, uh, substance abuse uh, and, and uh, mental health, for example, is the reason that they're going there. So if we really want to cut off uh, the homelessness issue in Atumwa, the, the uh, uh, domestic violence issue in Atumwa, we really need to be focusing on substance abuse and mental health. So we need $100,000. Uh, and that puts us in a precarious position of saying, well, yeah, you know, that's absolutely right. And quite clearly, this community doesn't have the, the funding just to hand out $100,000 to every nonprofit group there is. So I guess, sell me why your, why your uh, agency? Why not First Resources? Why not Cito? Why not American Home Finding?
The best way I can state that is every single one of those organizations, nearly everyone in this county come to us looking for help. And um, we are the one that all rolls down to. And I can guarantee, I can, I can prove that with the number of people that call me. And they have government funding and we don't. And that's the thing, we, you wouldn't believe the organizations in this town, all the ones that you mentioned, all the, every single one call us because they have this person they can't take care of, they don't know what to do. And we are not running on any type of government funding at this time. We don't plan on it because of some of the situations that the government puts you in that we don't um, spiritually believe in, that we don't want to have to cross that path in certain situations. So we're trying our best to do this without government funding. A lot of people think we're crazy, but I think we can do it. It's just that we have the community behind us that can help us. Yes, we are doing it, we are doing it. Yeah, and, and it's amazing when we started out with nothing. And we've got nearly this place close to being completed. And, and it's, like I said, every one of these organizations always call us at the very end when they can't get the help. And I guess that's the best way I can tell you when it comes to.
I guess I have to.
Even if you don't give us the money, I mean, we will finish this.
Yeah. Yeah, and another thing too, you know, is we are going to be meeting with all these organizations. We have meetings with them. We're working with them side by side. If they can't, they need help, then we're going to help them. If they, a lot of them are helping us too. So it's, we're not just doing this all alone. We have a lot of wonderful organizations in this town that are standing by our side and helping us in this.
I guess I have two questions. One would be, say, for instance, it was a family that was homeless and the father was there as well. In that case, what would you do?
Okay, um, this is something we talk about a lot. And if it's a man with children, we will get them up to Des Moines and into a shelter up there in a family shelter. Um, if it's a family, we'll probably do the same thing if they want to stay together. A lot of times you have women with boyfriends that the, and you know, it's like, we don't really want to put women with their boyfriends and the kids in there because this is, we're trying to teach these women that they can do this on their own without someone else. And I don't want to knock it, knock and say anything bad about men or guys, but it's, it's, this is a reoccurring situation we have a lot where the woman is trying to make ends meet and, and the boyfriend's living with her, living off her check. So we're trying to teach these women, empower them so they know they can do this on their own. They don't need to have one, one man after another man after another and having more and more kids that they can do this on their own. So but so, but we're not going to forget these people and just throw them out. We're going to, we're going to help them where we can. We have a van that was donated to us by um, the Children's Variety Charity that we can actually take those people up to Des Moines and get them into a shelter because we're not going to leave them alone and leave them freezing in the cold. We're still going to help them because, I mean, even though we call this a women and children's shelter, we're not going to stop helping the men or the families.
Great. And my second question would be, what is your, hmm, I guess, projected date of finishing? Or do you have one?
That's.
I mean, once you get the funds.
That, that's kind of up to whether, whether, when the funds come in. And, and another thing too, with the high costs of all the lumber going back up again and everything rising again, we're trying to use our grant money the best way we can. And, and we're, that's one of the reasons why we had to kind of stop because it was just outrageous on cost. So we're trying to use, I mean, people give us a lot of money and we use that money wisely because that's what we're supposed to do. So, you know, and, and another thing too, I don't know if we said this, we're on a pay as you go situation with our contractor. We don't owe him anything. We did, when we, when we run out of money, we stop for a little bit until we can raise the money again. So that's kind of how we're doing it. We don't want to have to owe anybody any money unless we have to have to. So we may have to stop a little bit, maybe a couple of months till we raise the money to keep going. And we've been doing that. We actually were still going even during the, during COVID. We were still working, we had volunteers down there. It was just harder because we couldn't get our contractors in.
I've got a couple of questions. What is the service area for your organization? Is it Atumwa, Waplo County, the counties around Waplo? How far out does your reach go?
It's Waplo County and the majority of the areas in southeast Iowa. Uh, because the closest place that they can go is Des Moines. And we do get a lot of people from different areas, Oskaloosa, Eldon, Fairfield coming to us. We got people coming in all the time asking us because they, they see something on the internet and think we're open and we're not. So we're not going to limit this just to Atumwa, the city of Atumwa. It's going to be Waplo County and the surrounding counties around it.
Okay, the, the other question that I had, you said you weren't planning on using grants, but almost all grants are either city, county, state or federal funding? And you said you didn't want to use grants, but then just a minute ago you referenced grants. So I'm a little confused.
Government grants, government HUD, things like that. We're trying to stay away from those. Because um, just because like spiritual reasons, certain things that they do that are wrote in those, those contracts that we don't feel is right. Um, just for an example, I will just state this, that um, right now in some of these HUD grants, they're telling us that if a man comes to the door, that we have to let him stay. And that's not what we're doing. We're doing a women and children's shelter. And if we turn this, turn this man down, he could come back at us and sit, and then we'd have to pay everything back. So in that situation, we can't do that. A lot of the women that are there are scared of men. They don't want to be around them. We're not going to be bringing men into where homeless children are. And we're not against men, but it's, it's just that we're working right now toward a women and children's shelter.
So I guess I'm, I'm curious because I've, I've heard a little bit of ambiguity in some of the statements here. So I just want to be really clear on this. You've mentioned the word religious churches, spirituality several times throughout your, your conversation. If someone doesn't match your religious affiliation, will they still be allowed to take part in this program?
They absolutely can come in. We don't, we won't, yeah, yeah, we won't question what religion they are or anything like that. We are Christian and we're just doing this because we want to help our brothers. We don't care what spiritual, anything about that.
I just wanted to, I wanted to be clear on that.
That's a good question.
Any other questions?
So, uh, yeah, so I'll be the last one to speak to you. So I just want to let you know that I am 100% guarantee we need this in our community. We're, I'm not denying that we need this in the community. Um, Mark came out as, as the accountant side. Let me go to the contracting side of this. So you said you're about halfway done with the building, correct? How much money have you spent building the building so far?
We've spent over $400,000.
So over $400,000. And you got an estimate here of 347,167.90. So $348,000 basically.
Yeah, so you can subtract like $79,000 from that, that I'm going to kind of check tomorrow to our general contractor.
Okay.
You know, so, and we, we do have funds in, in the bank, you know, to continue on at this present time, but not enough funds to go to the next level.
Okay, so this 347, that's the next level?
That, that is, that 347 is the next level. Then we also have our sanctuary side, which is the side that is cut off from the, the shelter side. Where we could have the, the cooling warming center. So people can get in and out of the weather. We also, you know, plan on using that for meetings, program areas to run, you know, whenever we need to have speakers or whatever for them.
Where does 347 get you? Just the women's shelter? Where does $347,000 get you? Just the women's shelter?
That, no, that gets us, yeah, doors open. The only thing not included in that is our solar panels, our generator. And then we have a sub-basement under the sanctuary side.
Yep, I see that here.
That is, it's a dirt floor, and while we use it for storage right now. So it does not include that, but it includes everything for living and to have the warm and cooling center.
So basically, $347,000 will get your doors open, get you ready to go, people can come in, and
Yes.
Men or women and children can come in and stay for the night. How many, you said 75 to 100 per night, or per time you can get in?
For the, yeah, that's, because it's open, we don't have separate rooms for them. It's a big, open area.
It's a big, open area.
They'll come in and sleep on cots.
Do you have, so I know you guys are going per, you know, when you have the money and stuff like that. Do you have a finalized set date? If, say, we were to give you the $100,000, do you have a finalized set date that you could give us to say, this is the day where this is going to be done? Because I'll tell you now, ARPA money has to be spent by a certain time, and the project has to be completed 100% by a certain time. So if we were to give you money, and then you miss that goal, that comes back on the city of Atumwa, and we have to repay that money or whatever, then that's going to come out of the city side of it. So is there a 100% guaranteed date that you would be done with this building?
We can't, we don't have one, just simply because, right now, I've had items on back order for over five months, though we've not been able to get in.
Okay. Does your contract, has your contractor given you an estimate of how long the rest of the work would take, like, month-wise?
They've been waiting, too. They actually had us up to six months of parts being, you know, things being back ordered.
Okay.
But...
So just recently, so we're upgrading the electrical system from a 200 amp to a 600 amp. It's, July was going to be the expected date for a 600 amp meter socket. And it's been ordered since last November.
Yep.
Fortunately, they found one at another electrical supply warehouse, and we did get it installed last week. So, you know, it is moving.
That's the bad side about contracting right now.
Think to that point, it's almost like, if the city were to consider this, it'd almost have to be that last $100,000, making sure that was getting that timeframe done and being able to complete, which may be looking at deferring this into that second year request, not necessarily what needs to be done in the next two weeks.
And another thing, too, I don't think we mentioned, that we're hoping, we're pretty sure that we'll be able to be open on a small capacity basis this winter. So that will be something, we are, will be open. It may not be for the full building. We'll continue on with what we're doing, but we do know, we planned that two years ago, but because of all the stuff going on. But we will be open on a small capacity basis in that basement area.
And that's what I was going to ask, if it were be possible for you to house a lower number of people?
Yeah, we're very close to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So this phase that we're in right now, which is the main level phase, that is, you know, all the rough-in construction's done, the guys in there drywalling right now, all the electrical rough-in's done. Once the drywall's done, we're looking at putting the ceiling in and the floor in. A lot of that stuff will be volunteer work, you know, like finishing floors and that type of thing. But once that level is complete, then we'll be able to, you know, start taking in clients.
And that's that main level that has the kitchen and...
No, no, just one up.
No, they finished.
Okay, that level is done. The one above it, the kitchen, and that area has, is like where the area where the women and kids sleep, and we have a nurse's office, we have a nursery offices up there. And then the next level up, that we put in a floor, and the next level up is a bay area for single women. So they'll be separated from the women and kids.
So that floor you see there is the new floor that was just installed in January. And so that's the level that they're working on right now. Yeah. So these are some of the pictures of the downstairs. So currently, we have, the downstairs is complete. There's a brand-new commercial kitchen down there. There's a brand-new commercial laundry down there. And, you know, there's bathrooms and showers down there. So, you know, the basement area is complete and ready to go. And that was, ended up being the biggest expense because of all the equipment that we had. You know, we purchased all brand-new equipment to put in there, and it's functioning.
You just said something that kind of jogged my memory. Since you're going to provide care for people 24/7, do you have to be certified or licensed by the state of Iowa, or what regulatory agency oversees this?
I don't think, there is certain things we do have, classes we have to take, and certain things that we have to qualify for. I'm not sure exactly what they all are. But another thing, too, we are not going to be open 24/7. The people will be able to stay all night, and then in the morning, after breakfast, they'll be released, because during that time of the day is when they have to go out and do the things they need to do to get jobs, to get food stamps, get whatever it is. And then in the afternoon, we open back up. So we won't be there 24/7 with all these people. There's going to be a point where they have to do certain things to get off their feet.
But staff will be there.
Yes, staff will always be there, always, yes. Cleaning and doing things that we need to do to catch up, to get ready for that day. But, and another thing, too, there is different courses. We have to have courses for food preparation, and there's classes I have to take for hand, and others have to take for handing out meds. So, yeah, we're going to be hitting up all these classes here really quick, and getting that all taken care of.
But you're not, you're not certain at this juncture, whether you have to be, like, DIA certified, or have any certifications? You don't know the answer to that.
Not that I know of. I don't think so, because in all my readings and all my research, I have never heard of any specific shelter license. I mean, we're going to be many, many different things that we have to be trained in, but I don't know of any specific thing like that, that I know of. I have never heard of that.
Sure, you don't have to be licensed by somebody. And even, any Department of Inspections and Appeals.
Oh, okay.
And even if they're not there during the day, because they're out doing the thing that you said they need to do, that's still part of their program. So they're still going to look at that as a full-time program, where they're going to be staying there for weeks on end, even if they're physically not there during the day doing this other stuff. That still is going to make it look like you're providing 24/7 care, because you really are.
Yeah. And we will be, anything licensed that we need to get, we will get them. We're going to do this the right way. So I can guarantee you that.
Yeah. I would check with the Department of Inspections and Appeals in Des Moines, because I'm not convinced you don't have to be licensed.
So I think, from the sounds of it, the recommendation for us is probably going to be, probably going to be the next round, which will be next year for the funding. But, you know, I would like to see, like, a timeline for when this building is going to be done, exactly what's going to be needed to do it, kind of more of a sustainability plan of going forward. Once this building is open, you're going to need monthly fees and stuff like that. You know, your grants and stuff like that, you're getting, but that's not really a sustainability plan unless those are recurring grants. So unless you're going to get that grant every year, it's not a sustainability plan. Just, if we give out money to an organization, we have to know that that money isn't going to be, you know, lost in three years, because you weren't able to get $120,000 a year in donations, or not, you know, how much ever you were. And even with the, I was, you know, I had a recommendation a couple of weeks ago, somebody was talking about, you know, with donations, you know, setting up a $10 a month from each person automatically kind of withdrawal, or they, they'll guarantee you $10 a month of donations kind of deal, or a dollar or $2, whatever it is. Kind of like, that would be, that would go a long way towards showing us that it's sustainable, that you're going to have that income per year, you're going to have that income, so that you're not, you know, three years from now, wondering, where am I going to get the next money to pay for this stuff. So my, that would be my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think that for us, you know, to see the program moving forward, making sure that you are going to get the building open, just because we do have so many limitations on what we can do with the money we have and the timeline of it, getting that, like you said, you're only halfway through $400,000. That's a huge building. So the other question I did have for you, is that building on the historical society registry?
No, no, not at the time. We had someone looking into that, but it was taking too long for us to have that done, because we needed to get to work on it. So we bypassed that. We were wanting to have help possibly doing, like, the roof and stuff like that, but it didn't work with our timeline.
So one of the great things about being on the historical registry is there is funding for buildings through the historical registration, so...
We were told that, but we were told that it's iffy, because so many, but our people are after it, and that there's a good chance we wouldn't get it. So we just, we had to move forward, because we needed to get this done. We wanted to do it, but...
So we do have donations that are recurring monthly. You know, one of our best fundraisers or sources of income is United States Postal Service, because every day, we get checks in the mail.
Okay. So do you have a thing where it's set up, where you know that you're getting, and what's that kind of, like, what's the, I mean, is it guaranteed, or is it you're just getting it in the mail? I mean, is it...
We have both.
Is it a registration where you can go?
Both. We have churches that give us monthly amounts. We have them, and we're getting more and more. They're coming in like crazy. That's...
And they're guaranteeing, they're guaranteeing you guys are going to get that money every month?
They're giving us monthly amounts, it's been for a year, a couple of years now. And we also have the can and bottle ongoing fundraiser, which is huge for us, and that's...
I always drop off my cans there.
That's, thank you very much. That is a huge help for us on that, too. That pays for all of our utilities and everything to keep us going, so that we have not had any problems with any of that, so far.
Would you, would you come up and give us your name and address, please, for the record?
Laura O'Sullivan, 1-8414, Rock Bluff Road, here in Atumwa. Pardon me, but I just wanted to say, on the sustainability of donations, I think I'm three years solid with a percentage of every paycheck, then gets matched by my employer, going directly to whatsoever you do. And I know I'm not alone, at Deere, between wage and salary. We have the opportunity to set aside a reoccurring or a percentage that goes straight from our paycheck, and then Deere matches that to a certain, and I can't remember the dollar amount, but huge dollar amount, they match 100% of our donations. So for the last three years or so, between myself, my husband, numerous coworkers are sustainably giving donations week after week.
So that's something set up through your employer, where they've agreed to take a percentage out of your paycheck, they'll match a percentage of it, and then they send it to the nonprofit organization. Is that of your choice, or is that John Deere just has that organization, or do you know?
No, that is of our choice.
Of your choice.
And whatsoever you do is one of them.
Okay. Awesome. Well, I didn't know about that program. Of course, I don't work at Deere, but thank you for that information.
Thank you.
It's called, it's called the Vennivity Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess, I guess I would agree with Russ to the point of, I think that the ask might be a little bit premature, just based on the fact that, you know, normally, when people come to us and ask for a sizable donation, they also follow it up with a copy of their operating budget, a sustainability plan. And that doesn't appear to be present right now, and I understand why, because you still haven't even finished construction yet. So I get it. But there's some follow-up concerns that I have, you know, not knowing for certain whether your organization needs to be licensed in any sort of way, which, to me, is a grave concern. I would hate for the organization to be opened up, just to find out that you weren't a licensed facility, and then you're shut down as soon as you're opened up. So I guess my opinion would be, you know, that would be an ask, that after you get a few more ducks in a row, then we have this conversation again. That would be my opinion.
So one other thing, last year, in July, we did a point-in-time count, and we turned in those numbers. And I believe it was 67 individuals came to us. When the mayor, at that time, had seen those numbers, he couldn't believe it. He didn't realize we had homeless people in this town. Ask our, you know, police department. They have to deal with these people every day. It's a black eye to the city. It's something we want to, you know, clean up, you know. And we can't do it until we get open.
You're right. I was just at the library, and they were talking about the same thing. Homeless person just hanging out. But yes, it's definitely a need in town. And I appreciate it when you took me on my tour. And I do see the work that you guys are trying to do. And with, moving forward, just continue to keep doing what you're doing, because I know y'all are. You're not going to stop, not at this point.
No.
The beautiful things that are happening there need to happen here in our town. And just with what's going on in our town, we need that. We need that. So just continue to do what you do. And regardless if you get a yes or a no here today, I know y'all not going to stop. So...
Just, you know, we were asking for this money, you know, it's from the American Republic, you know, Recovery Act, you know, to help, you know, I read, I read the act. And, you know, it's to help humanitarian, you know, issues, and not so much but windows in these buildings. But that's what you're going to do with it. So, you know, that's fine, unfortunately. But thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for letting us speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, do you have anything else in your administrator's report?
Not for this evening, Your Honorable Mayor.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to ask if anyone in the audience wants to speak on any of the agenda items on tonight's agenda. And we do have a person that's going to speak later on when we get to that point. But is there anybody else that wants to speak on any of the items on tonight's agenda?
Approve an additional step increase for J. JD Wheaton. Recommendation, approve an additional step increase for JD Wheaton effective February 27, 2022.
I'd make a recommendation that we table this item until a later undefined date.
I second that.
Chris will take a vote.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the approval of a 10-year lease agreement with the US DOT FAA for the Remote Communications Outlet Room in the terminal building at the Atumwa Regional Airport.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to Phil.
All right. So this is a public hearing for a particular agreement. The Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, has been...
Thank you, folks, for coming tonight and showing your support.
Appreciate it. Thank you. The FAA has been leasing space from the city of Atumwa at the airport for the purpose of operating an antenna and equipment. It has been a 10-year lease, which has expired and is subject to renewal. City staff has negotiated successor agreements. It has been reviewed by legal counsel and recommended for adoption by the Airport Board of Supervisors. And I believe a copy that was attached along with the resolution.
Does council have any questions for Phil? Does anyone in the audience have any questions for City Administrator Phil Rath? If not, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 602022, authorizing the mayor to sign the 10-year lease agreement with the US DOT FAA for the Remote Communications Outlet Room at the Atumwa Regional Airport. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 602022.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the 2023 city budget.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And Tina, are you or Phil going to take this?
Well, I'll start with the presentation. And I had printed off black and white copies for you. The one on screen will be in color. And so I'm going to slip to the next slide here.
The people in the audience have copies of this?
No, no, they'll see it up here. Okay. All right. So for the council, I just bring my copies. If you need to make notes or anything that you have for reference there. And if you can't see it on the screen, it's in front of you. And if you can't see it on the screen, it's in front of you. So this is a graph here where it's just showing, and you've seen this before, where we've got our sister cities in blue on the right-hand part here, Burlington, Clinton, Fort Dodge, Mason City, Marshalltown, Muscatine. These are communities that are similar in size and/or nature to the city of Atumwa. This is the assessed valuation that they had reflected for fiscal year 2022. The one right to the left of the blue and I'll call it magenta, that is the average of all of those cities. The one to the far left, that was Atumwa's assessed valuation in 2022. And you can see it is lower than not only the average, but all of the other cities there. The one in between in the darker purple is the assessed valuation for fiscal year 23. So on a positive, we had increased about $50 million in valuation and that is a trend in the right direction. So we're still well below those averages, but we're moving in the right direction. And, and this is why it is so important. The assessed valuation in Iowa, where we have fixed levies, you know, maximum amount so we can levy in any of the particular areas. Assess valuation or growth is the only way we can really increase that revenue outside of finding alternative revenue sources. So this is a positive here. So just wanted to explain real quick, and I don't think I covered this when we had our budget meeting earlier, but kind of the approach to municipal budget, at least from my perspective, is the budget is a planning document. You know, we try to as staff and then as you as elected officials adopting it, we try to get as close as we can to projected revenues, projected expenditures. You know, my personal philosophy, and I think Tina had shared this with me, is, you know, we tend to underestimate revenues a little bit. So we try to overestimate expenditures to a tad, just so that at the end, we can balance the budget and we end up with as close to zero as we can, but not hopefully negative when we're looking at the end of the year fund balance. So that's kind of our, our personal philosophies and just something that's worked for me over, over the years. Some of the other things that, from a personal standpoint, when I look at this, is maintaining an objective approach, trying not to favor one division or department over another. So not saying that we're going to put more money into parks one year instead of public safety or vice versa, in trying to make sure that all entities are treated fairly on what their needs are and what the needs of the community are. Maintaining the service levels we have, you know, unless there's a drastic need to have to cut services, trying to maintain what it is that we have that citizens are used to. Limiting negative impact or reduced of reduced or eliminated services. So if we do have a tight budget, then we do need to look to reduce, trying to reduce the negative impact of what that would look like. Limiting the impact upon current employees and then finally encouraging growth and increased valuation. So this here is a, it's kind of a chart. Again, you've seen this before. This is, you know, we always try to have that balanced budget. That's something that, that we strive for. And, and then on top of that is that coverage ratio. And the coverage ratio is the, the amount of fund balance divided by the annual expenditures. So the year-end fund balance divided expenditures gives us that coverage ratio. And if you look at 2020, 2021, that budget, that was where we were really looking at in dire needs. We were about a million dollars behind schedule. When we were looking at that, we had a surplus of revenue in that year from a couple of things, which is how we got back onto the positive swing of things here. One of those was COVID relief funds, so that were injected into the city. Another thing was some revenue or new revenue that was recovered from our relationship with the water department. There were some billing errors that were corrected and that injected a bunch of cash in there as well. And then you can see that the revenue was over a million dollars higher than expenditures in that year. And that's what bumped up our fund balance by that million. And as it cherries the next few years, it's pretty close to the revenues and expenditures balancing out. I asterisk the second to last column there because that one is reflecting the ARPA funding and we have about $1.8 million. And so that inflates our revenues and inflates our expenditures. We'll have that for two years and then that's going to drop off. And so the coverage ratio, like I said, it's that the ratio dividing expenditure or the fund balance by expenditures. Well, if we have inflated expenditures, that's going to lower that percentage. And that's an arbitrary number there because of that. Now, looking ahead, as expenditures will continue to increase, if our fund balance at the end of the year doesn't increase by a similar amount, that coverage ratio will still get smaller and smaller. And so the last column is reflecting the revenues and expenditures without that 1.8 million. And you can see we're still at 24%. And our goal has been as a city is to have that covered ratio between 20 and 25%. So we are in there, whether we include the ARPA or not, we're still in a good place there and, and should continue to be. All right. So this is just a quick graph, just kind of showing percentages of our tax levy by fund. And so when we talk about the, the general fund or it's also called the eight 10, that maximum is $8.10, that is about 38% of what we have of our total levy. The other general fund, that is made up of the event center or Bridgeview Center levy, the library and our insurance levy. And that is about 6% there. And I apologize, a little light on the screen. Trust and agency, that is our police and fire retirement or the 411 account, FICA and IPRs and any other employee benefits. That has decreased over the last year, but it's still sitting at about 35%. So that's still a big chunk of our overall budget. Then you have the emergency levy and debt service. So now expenditures by category, it's just another graphical look at where the money goes. The Iowa code identifies nine major expenditures, which are reflected on the, the screen here. So they have public safety, which we have about $10.3 million or 29% of that pie. Public works, 9.1. Health and social services, just under a million. Culture and recreation at 4.4. Community and economic development, 860,000. General government, just over 2 million. Debt service, 4.9. Capital products, 5.4. And business type or enterprises at 16 million. So that's going to be like our sewer fund and things to that effect. All right. So this is an update from what you saw last year, if you were on council last year. This is looking at our historic and proposed tax rate. So this is looking at from 2016 up to the current or proposed year, which is at the top. And as you can see, the last few years, that is bending in, which means we are reducing our tax rate. And again, for this year, it is being reduced by a dollar this year. The far left there in the light blue, that is that eight 10 or the general fund levy. The next section is the other general fund levy. And that shrunk in the last couple of years because the transit has been regionalized now and we dropped that off of that, that levy. The small, very small orange is that emergency levy. That is maxed out at 27 cents or I think it's just under 27 this year. And debt service is the darker blue. And then finally, that trust and agency, those employee benefits and 411, that is the green at the end. And you can see that is the one that has come in a little bit and is resulting the most in that dollar year-over-year reduction. So this is just showing the numbers for that. It is showing in the far left there, the 2021, 22, what those levies were and the resulting dollar amounts. And the next over is the 22, 23 projected or proposed levies and the dollar amounts there. And one of the highlights here, as you can see, is, let's take the general fund there, $8.10 is the same levy in 21 and 21, 22 and 22, 23. But there's about $430,000 difference in revenue. That is that assessed valuation increase. And you can see those numbers at the bottom there. The, the big jump in assessed valuation, that, that is the big thing that it caused the increase in revenue. Next slide.
Go back.
Yeah. You go back. Yeah.
Did your debt service, did debt service go up 10 cents?
Yes. So, so the request is for debt service to go up 10 cents from the 4195 to the 4295. At the same time, trust and agency dropped from 8.5 to 7.4. So that dropped a dollar 10, eating part of that 10 cents there.
Okay.
Yep. And so you can see here, here's the historical trend of that levy rate and a big drop then from last year to this year. And we have, this will be the lowest in five years as far as a levy. And in another year or two, we're hoping to get below that $20 threshold. Here's the valuation, just kind of reflecting the, what that looked like and that big jump there. And the next slide is actually a side-by-side. And here's where you can really see, because of that increased valuation and the, the kind of the cause and effect there with the tax levy then being able to come down. And I will open it up to any questions from, well, it's public hearing, so.
Yeah. So what is the final total dollar figure for the 22, 23 budget?
You're talking about the tax levy or?
The total budget.
Total budget?
Yeah.
Let's see. Including everything dollar-wise. The total expense for the year budget is $69,44,323. Sorry? That's correct. I'm sorry. So minus the transfers in and out, which is even, it is $54,321,980. Thank you.
Yeah. You think it's important for the public to know what the total dollar value is of the upcoming budget that starts July 1st? Does council have any questions for Phil regarding the budget?
And Tina can answer any specific questions as well if there are any.
Tina, did you have anything you wanted to add to Phil's comments? Okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions for Mr. Rath regarding the proposed city budget for FY '23? Now's your time to ask questions if you have any questions. Hearing none, I would ask, I'd ask for a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 642022, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 642022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on the disposal of city-owned property described as Lot 11 and Block 3 of the Blake Park addition to the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, commonly known as 817 Chester Avenue.
I'll go ahead and open this public hearing and I believe Zach's going to do this presentation.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Rippling Waters offered the city $125 for the vacant lot in 817 Chester. They intend to place a Homes for Iowa house on the lot and sign a development agreement agreeing to construct the new home within three years. Rippling Waters is a nonprofit housing developer and as a nonprofit developer, they're entitled with a $125 price as per the city's policy on vacant lots. This resolution would authorize the sale after a public hearing. And Homes for Iowa is a program out of the corrections facility, I think in Anamosa, where they construct modular homes and then sell them to be placed on lots.
And the city has already purchased one of those new homes for this coming summer, correct?
Not the city, Rippling Waters.
Rippling Waters. Okay.
They've received. Zach, how long have we owned this property?
I actually don't know. It's probably been at least a couple of years.
And has anybody petitioned you about not selling it to them and said selling it to the, like one of the landowners around there? Have they requested purchase of this property?
So we've not received any feedback in the context of don't sell it to them. We did receive a previous petition from a neighbor who wanted to purchase this lot for green space. Per the city's policy at that time, being a buildable lot, we weren't able to make it available for green space.
So this would be just one house?
On this lot, it'd just be one house. Yep.
That's right on the corner of Pocahontas and Chester.
Okay. It's right across from Evans. Great location.
It is a good location, right across from the middle school.
It's a great location. And all these other lots we coming up vacant too here, so.
Anybody have any other questions for Zach from the council? Anyone in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask since this is a public hearing? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 762022, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property commonly known as 817 Chester Avenue to Rippling Waters for $125. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 762022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on the application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a community development block grant from the COVID-19 program.
So our last one. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and Zach's going to handle this presentation also.
Thank you, Mayor. The last public hearing had a lot of resolutions.
Yes, we do.
The Iowa Economic Development Authority has a special round of funding for community development block grants as a result of federal COVID relief funding. Area 15 Regional Planning and Staff identified a project that would provide food assistance under the Food Assistance Program. And this is operated by Star Workforce Blessings Soup Kitchen, which provides meals to persons experiencing homelessness. Since the beginning of the pandemic, the number of daily meals served by blessings has more than doubled from 100 to 150 a day to 250 to 300 meals a day, all while operating on residential-grade appliances, many of which have since broken or they have a lot of maintenance issues. If funding, if funded, this grant would provide $100,000 from the CDBG program for two commercial stoves, two commercial refrigerators, two commercial freezers, three double convection ovens, one stainless steel compartment sink, one commercial pasta cooker, one industrial washer dryer and 75,000 takeout containers, which is a one-year supply. This would not only support the growing need for the service of blessings, but also serve, allow them to serve more nutrition, more nutritional food and a wider variety of meals. And this grant would not require any local match. The obligation for the city would be in administering the grant. The resolution would authorize the mayor to sign and submit the application and if funded, sign contract-related documents. The other thing just I did want to note, Sheri asked me to make it clear, this resolution, there's no city funding to go to this program. And also this program is specific to food service. There isn't anything where whatsoever you do and blessings are competing. They both do great work. This doesn't involve choosing one over the other. These are just, this program very narrowly fits the kind of work they do and would be valued, valuable to them.
And I believe Gary and Sheri Locksmith would like to go ahead and make a few comments at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I really don't have much to say that Zach didn't already say, but I did make a cheat sheet just to let you know what we do. We did not close during COVID and we feed 75,000-plus meals a year. We feed 880 to 300 people a day. We operate on 50 to 70 volunteers a week. We saw through 88 individuals and families from homeless to housed, most of them getting simultaneous employment and saw them through to employment. 80 of those were funded by STAR and seven of those were funded by someone else, but we facilitated all of them, all 88. We started in 2012 with residential appliances and those have since gassed out. We used residential appliances and, and, and we're down to cooking with you. and, and, and we're down to cooking with used roasters and keeping, our ovens don't come up to temperature, but we do use them for, uh, um, keeping things warm. So, so if this comes through, it will be a great thing. And I don't mean to take any more time, but I thank you for your consent.
Does council have any questions that they'd like to ask Sherry or Zach?
I, I just say, I, I want, I want to say thank you. Uh, my aunt donated time to you guys, and this was a great organization for her to, to get out of her house, and, and you guys do some wonderful work, and I want to thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, the beauty of this is that with 70 volunteers a week, and Doug's done a lot of volunteer work down there, um, we get to work with really great hearts. I don't have to work with people who have to be there. You know, we all did that, did those careers, but, um, this is a, a joy because we work with the, some of the best hearts in Atumwa, so thank you.
I would also just like to echo what Russ said. I've been to, uh, your soup kitchen and actually eaten dinner there and volunteered and, in the past, in another life. And, uh, it's been really a great service to provide to the people of Atumwa. I really applaud you guys for what you continue to do. It's a very needed service.
Well, you know what? One thing is, we don't feed the same people for 10 years. We've been doing this for 10 years. People have a season, a season of need, and, and I've had seasons of need, so it, it just works out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 77, 2022, authorizing the mayor to sign and submit the application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Community Development Block Grant from the COVID-19 program for the Atumwa Blessing Soup Kitchen Food Program Assistance Project, and if funded, to sign all contract-related documents. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 77, 2022.
Move recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Your honor, I would ask for a brief recess.
How long would you like?
10 minutes.
Is that an agreement with everybody?
That's fine.
I'm good.
Okay, we will go ahead and, uh, take a short 10-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. We've still got quite a bit to go through, so people probably need a couple of bathroom breaks.
Good, good timing. Good timing. It's about ready to get up myself.
This is the Larry and Zach Show tonight.
Pardon?
Thank you. He told me.
Yes, I really did. I said, I said that. Yeah, I was around, but I was just a long. And so we had, uh, I checked, you know, all the. Okay. So I. And I was really impressed to see that the meter started. And meters. Yeah. Yeah. So that means, uh. Yeah. So there. It's a lot. You see, that's. So there's.
Yeah. And I was so good with those dancing, the wee dance. The big dance, like, how do schools do this? And everybody, like, they can't do this dance. Like, oh, I think these are just. So I was like, oh, can't do this.
All materials.
You know, we started seeing that without swoop and now we're.
Yeah, so now materials. Yeah. Oh, we're just.
Bad.
Especially. Then the third quarter. I'm sorry. Right, Thursday. Yeah, so. We get wrong. You guys have seen. See. Lucky I'm not close. That was a try, we said. Yeah, it's kind of exposed stuff, right? Yeah. See, I've got. I think that's. Yeah. I really don't want to. I'm having. This might be your first. I was. And then.
I need that, yeah. I'll leave. So. I don't. Look, I didn't report. Well, I mean, now we're back. Yeah. You know, they're. About your. First. Of course. Of course. That's what I'm. This is. Really. How it's. Yeah, I don't even realize. Yeah. 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 And. 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 Just. Um. I just. But I mean. That was. Just. No. Or. Or. Yes. Um. Scary. So. I mean, they're. Do it. Get used to it. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. And then on the front. And then on the side. On the base. That was. You know. On there. They all have the back. Yeah. So it's gonna be the show. I know. Like, you know, I was. Yeah. Yeah. Counselor. And, and so. Obviously. Only. Yeah. Also. Fair. Ah, she. You know. You're. Very. So thanks. For each. You know, getting up. And making the nice. You know, certainly. Yeah. We. This. Well. Oh. How. Yeah. This is. A bad. You know, there's a. Oh. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah. That's right. That's right. We're really excited about that. Oh. It was. Totally. You know, I'm. Just. Like. It's. Some. Of course. And. We. They have. Yeah. Yes. They were. That. That. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Oh. It was. Yeah. Definitely. All. Oh, yeah. She does. Oh, that's. She. Absolutely. She does. Thank you. That's right. Yeah. Look. I'm like. Well, I'm. Yeah, that's it. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. But. Sandy. Yeah. That's great. Okay. All right. Yes. Let me write that down.
Yeah.
I said we'll reset for 10 more.
I think.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Is everybody here?
Okay, I think everybody's back, so, uh, we will reconvene the city council meeting, and Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Resolution number 50, 2022, awarding the contract for the 2022 Street Patch Repair Program to TK Concrete Incorporated of Pella, Iowa, in the amount of 145,750 dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 50, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role. Oh, sorry. Larry, you need to talk first.
God, I'm fine.
I almost had this right tonight. Mr. Seals, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, this project is a unit price contract for replacement of full-bet PCC panel replacement on selected streets. Uh, the streets are Albia Road, Carter Ave, McLean Street, and Ferry Street. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on February 23rd, uh, 2:00 PM. Two bids were received. The lowest responsive bidder is TK Concrete Inc. of Pella, Iowa, in the amount of 145,750 dollars. Uh, the budget amount was 150,000.
Council have any questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 66, 2022, approving professional services agreement between the City of Atumwa and McClure Engineering Company for the Highway 34 Vine Street Interchange Project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 66, 2022. So.
Second. Come on, you guys. I thought we had a good rhythm going here. Okay, Larry's going to take this one, too.
Uh, this agreement provides professional engineering services for reviewing, uh, the current scope developed by Iowa Department of Transportation's for the Highway 34 and Vine Street Interchange to Madison Avenue. Uh, what we're going to look at is can they reconfigure, uh, this particular roundabout at this intersection and design it to where we can tie in Vine Street for a future relocation if things work out. Um, this study, uh, I guess I covered that, but we need to do this to incorporate it into, uh, the DOT's letting process. The total cost of the design outlined in the agreement is a lump sum fee of 27,820 dollars. We have 20,000, um, 30,000 budgeted. To kind of give you a little bit more background on this, uh, the DOT has been planning for multiple years now on the 34 corridor from Wildwood all the way to the existing roundabout to rebuild that corridor. Uh, they do a five-year planning schedule. This is something that we need to do. These engineers are selected by the DOT, and they would have all the base information to be able to go in and work on this, uh, to allow future relocation of Vine Street when we want to rebuild that street. It's at, uh, or approaching the end of its useful life. This is just a concept. We've got several concepts. Uh, this area where it meets Madison will change if we move forward with this design.
So I, I just, because there's been questions about this. So this is going to be, this roundabout's going to be done by DOT, correct?
That's correct. Everything within the DOT footprint, which is basically back right about, lines up with the corner of this building, all of that would be the DOT expense in the future. Uh, depends if it makes their funding cycle this round or next year's round. Just kind of depends how the state works.
And so, so what we're approving here tonight is for, are we, we're doing this survey or the DOT is going to do, or we're going to have a company do the survey?
Because the design has already been completed, at least the concept design. In order for us to be able to plan for this future roadway, we would have to pay for any changes they've already completed in their design. They want to see, does it make sense? Can we make it work?
Okay.
So it's kind of the next step.
Yeah.
And this is, this has been a, a kind of a request and working with, uh, with John Deere, with the, the state, and with the city on trying to look at alternatives here. But as, uh, Larry said, because it had already been designed to a degree, any changes, uh, which we believe would be beneficial. I think all three entities thought that, but you still have to get in that process without jumping out of the queue for the DOT. And that's the big thing is kind of keeping on that timeframe, um, but also looking at the future benefit of, uh, traffic flow and, uh, and potential expansion of, of deer, things like that.
So what, the rest of this would be our responsibility?
Okay. The Vine Street part of it here.
Right. All this design concept does is, is just let them reconfigure this, see if it's feasible from an elevation alignment standpoint, and then we would take off and actually do the design for that portion.
And that's all on the, that's all like their parking lot area, right? That's on the other side of the trail towards Vine Street there?
It, it is, and again, this is very conceptual. Uh, we actually think that the alignment would come back around and reconfigure here. It just depends on your curves, what you can do for your design speed. One of the things and the benefit was this would, uh, create a one-campus, uh, area for John Deere. It improves their safety drastically as far as shift change, personnel going in, in and out through this, uh, particular section.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
There's also discussion about the truck traffic and stacking, which would be a benefit to the area as well.
Yeah, this would allow actually to come off of our road section, come in. One of the things they would like to do is create a truck route straight into this portion of the plant. Um, you know, that could develop. Right now, they have an area along the fence that they could run trucks. It is one-way.
Yeah.
Um, it creates some operational, uh, issues for them internally. This would help a lot of their plant operations over the long time. And that's what we were looking at, is working with one of our, our major economic engines here in town and allow them options in the future as they.
Yeah, because I could tell you that's an issue, trucks getting in and out of that property.
Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 68, 2022, approving the Iowa's Transportation Alternatives Program application for the Oxbow Lagoon Link Trail, and authorizing the mayor to sign the application. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 68, 2022.
Do we have a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And Larry, I believe this one's yours, too.
The TAP application is for funding for a project that will consist of, uh, 5,260 feet of PCC trail, starting at the Greater Atumwa Park, following the southern, um, and eastern sides of the Oxbow. We have four aerial photos, if you could go back to that first one. You can see there, we do have, we do have an issue in behind one business where we have to come back out, but then the plan would be to follow along this. but then the plan would be to follow along the shoreline. And follow up and then come back out to Richmond. But what we're trying to do is connect both sides of the trail to the newly installed Milner Street. This is one of the main corridors that we put in as a multi-use trail to tie in all the school systems over to Mary Street. You can see where it basically is just gonna wrap around to the Ferry Street intersection and then at the roundabout. We've done some shore work to reinforce this four-slope. Eventually, the trail would come down through here and connect to the park. This would also allow, if funded, a route from this part of the neighborhood, which currently there isn't anything that's really pedestrian-friendly through here. You're against a lot of, a lot of traffic, higher-speed traffic at times. So that's basically what we're trying to accomplish with this grant. This is the same project that we submitted last year for COVID funding and we wasn't successful. So we're gonna go back through the TAP, which is local, local funds in a sense. Again, this grant is available through Area 15 Regional Planning Affiliation members for use on transportation alternative improvement projects. This program actually is eligible up to 100% federal grants. They feel like it's more competitive if we have local funds involved. Wapla County Trails has committed 38,000 in cash for matching funds. And then the project construction cost is estimated at 712,000, so roughly 712,000. Design is roughly 57,000, and construction management and observation is 71, for a total project of $841,500. In-kind services for, for our staff would be 128,000, Wapla County Trails 38, and then the city had committed 20,000 future CIP bonds. So the total TAP grant that we'd be applying for, 654,717. Do you have any questions?
Would this trail extension be asphalt or concrete?
This would be PCC, concrete.
Quick question for you, Larry. If we could go to the photo for the roundabout section. So one of the questions I have, it's probably more of a longer-range thing. This might fit into the parks plan somewhere. I'm not exactly sure. But do we ever have any intention of using that section of lagoon there for anything other than water? And the reason that I'm asking that is because the, where the grade is right now, where, where y'all are making the, the level piece there right next to the highway, is extremely low, which I don't think is gonna allow for too much water, water height. So is the intention to keep that, that lagoon as low as possible? And if so, at some point in the future, are we gonna be looking at a situation like we had at the other section of the park where we had to fill in because the water went bad?
Not really. What we've done here is we started fixing this toe. We had some erosion here. We've armored all the way along this bank to prevent any future erosion. We did cut in. There's still several feet to fill. They've just started back in this spring. They're gonna raise that on up. If you remember in the design of the lagoon when we built the new pumps, storm stations, the normal pool level's 630 feet, and it can bounce to 634. So we have four foot of storage in that lagoon. That's the range that we operate that in based on the intensity of the storm. So we're gonna build the path up higher than the 634.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 692022, awarding the contract for the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division One East of Iowa Avenue Project to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $3,143,755. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 692022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Larry, this is yours also.
Just as a recap, this project really consists of five smaller subsystems. It's part of the Phase Eight Division One. We ended up dividing that project into multiple phases, just due to constructability and overall cost. The, the general project is bounded by Iowa on the west, Mable on the south, Walnut on the east, and Locust on the north. All of the projects are within there. This, this also, one of the other big benefits would, would allow us to change the Orchard Street Pump Station to a storm-only operation and also eliminate a CSO in the future. Again, our plans are always posted on the city website and submitted to Master Builders of Iowa and the Iowa League of Cities for publication. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on March 9th, 2022 at 2:00 PM. Only one bid was received. The low bidder is Langman Construction of Rock Island, Iowa, in the amount of $3,143,755. We had 3 million budgeted, so it is over budget. We did go back and we looked at a lot of different things. We did see quite an increase. Our engineer did put together a letter of recommendation to award it, and that's based on looking at contract lettings this spring throughout the state. One of the things that we benefit from, from a firm of their size, is they have a lot of different projects throughout the entire state and even in some of the adjacent states. What we've seen to date is laid out kind of in their letter, we're seeing a lot of construction costs increase by 20%. And that's really what occurred to us. When you go through and look at some of the major bid items, and it really just boils down to supply and demand, you see a lot of pre-cast that has doubled. You see pipe costs that has 50% higher. One, and we knew at some point we would get there as a state, as you start putting more and more work on the street, you have the same number of contractors, your prices are gonna go up. We considered and discussed, should we reject all bids and go back to, out on the street? But we really don't feel like we're gonna get a better bid. We have done that in the past and actually received higher bids. So I guess between our engineering firm and our staff, we recommend that we award it. We would have to take the balance out of road use, which it has a healthy fund balance and, and could support this.
That was gonna be my question. Where would the difference come from? Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 702022, setting public hearing on proposed ordinance number 31932022, granting an electric transmission franchise to ITC Midwest LLC. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 702022.
Do we have a recommendation? So move.
Second.
Larry, you're up again.
This is just a proposed ordinance that will grant ITC Midwest LLC its, and its successors, and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, direct, maintain, and operate in the City of Atumwa, Iowa, an electrical transmission system for a period of 25 years.
What exactly are we talking about, electric transmission system?
Well, it's kind of interesting how the power companies have developed over time. Some of the transmissions, think of the one that crosses along the levee, all the way from basically Eddyville through town. The ones you see down by the skate park, runs on through XL. That's some of their major system. They're the high-voltage carriers.
Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 712022, setting dates of a consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number one to the Wildwood Drive Highway 34 Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 712022.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. This resolution does not commit to anything other than setting dates for hearings. In this case, the Wildwood, the Wildwood Drive Highway 34 Urban Renewal Area, which was established August 11th, 2021, has a proposed first amendment. The amendment would add no new land to the urban renewal area and base valuations would also be unchanged. The amendment adds two projects to the urban renewal plan, because Hopkins Property LLC is looking to construct a multi-tenant retail strip center in the outlot at Coles. The development is anticipated to cost $2.15 million, and the city would, if, if adopted the amendment and the project would allow the city to enter into a development agreement to provide an upfront economic development grant of $75,000 at the time the project is completed, as well as a partial tax rebate for a period of eight years, not to exceed $475,000. Incentives would leverage a tool called tax increment financing, or TIF. TIF allows local governments to leverage, leverage the future value of improvements to provide incentives to get the work done today. Most of the property tax paid on the value, on the value added to the property from the project can be captured by the city and used for incentives. In this case, some of that value would be returned to the developer in the form of a tax rebate. Value captured would also cover the cost of the economic development grant over the period of eight years. The second project added to the urban renewal plan would empower the city to apply tax increment from the district to recover planning, engineering, and attorney fees incurred in establishing the plan. At the March 7th, 2022 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted six to zero to recommend that the, to the council that the plan, the amendment is consistent with the city's plan for development as a whole. In addition to the plan and zoning recommendation, other taxing entities will be invited tomorrow. They'll, we'll send out invitations tomorrow to participate in a consultation meeting to provide feedback on the amendment. That consultation meeting, I think, will be in a couple weeks. It's in the resolution. It also set, oh, it's in, it's in the summary, too. It sets the date for that meeting at 10:00 AM, March 21st, in the council chamber. The resolution also sets a public hearing to consider the adoption of the amendment, and that public hearing would be April 5th.
Any questions for Zach?
Zach, what exactly is gonna be in this strip, well, strip center? Can they put an Olive Garden in there?
I don't think that any of the tenant spaces are large enough for an Olive Garden. So the developers looking to fill four tenant bays. One of those, they don't have a tenant selected for. That one's also designed to have two doors. It could be divided into two smaller bays for a tenant making an actually five-center, or a five-unit center. The other three tenants, one of those tenants would be re-tenanted from the mall. That would be Maurice's. One of the tenants would be re-tenanted from downtown. That'd be Miracle Ear. And then one would be New, which would be Vision for Less. And those are the tenants at this time, and all those negotiations are still ongoing with filling the, the project.
Any other questions for Zach?
So we're just setting the public hearing, right? Right, this is just setting dates. The public hearing and the consultation meeting. Okay.
No other questions. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 722022, awarding the contract for mowing and nuisance cleanup services for the City of Atumwa to Iowa Fence Incorporated of West Des Moines, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 722022.
Do we have a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. And Chris, did anybody request to speak on this item? Okay.
I don't have anything.
I'll, I'll cover a little bit later then. The RFP for contractual mowing services and nuisance cleanup services was released February 2nd, 2022. Responses were due at 4:30 PM on February 18th, and three responses were received. Staffs provided the pricing and scoring for each RFP response in the packet. Iowa Fence Incorporated provided the response that scored highest. Two responses out of the three were competitive on pricing, but this response was the only one that provided all the required elements in the RFP, and so it scored significantly higher for some of the areas that we measured on. Iowa Fence offered a lower price on mowing the Jefferson Drainage Ditch in lots over one acre. It was $5 higher on lots smaller than one acre. The Jefferson Drainage Ditch and large lots are projects that the city usually pays for without any reimbursement, while the smaller lots, projects that require hand-clearing and nuisance cleanups are costs that are assessed to nuisance code violators. And so in scoring, some preference also went to Iowa Fence because they were quoting lower prices on the things that the taxpayer ultimately has to pay for, and maybe some higher prices on things that are costs that are passed on in assessments to violators. One of the bidders, which is the current holder of the contract, was J&amp;J Mowing. They've had that contract for 10 years. They did, theirs was also the response that did not include all the elements in the RFP. They did request to try to submit other information. That information was also included in the packet with some cover pages to identify what was received on time and what was received after. And I was told that Don Jones planned to be here tonight and speak. I don't know what might have prevented him from being here, but I do just want to make sure to draw attention to that, that he had that contract for quite a while and was, and was very concerned about having lost out on it. His understanding was that he might not need to provide as much information about references because he'd had it for so long, even though some of that information was requested.
Any questions for Zach?
Just for clarification, the RFP was a standard RFP package that defined everything that needed to be included by the date that the RFP was due, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I assume since Iowa Fence isn't local, they would plan on developing a local office here?
So they're going to have a foreperson for their crew that works out of Oskaloosa, and they're gonna be moving back and forth. They have contracts with cities or multifamily apartment complexes, things like that, in southeast Iowa, including Indianola in that area. So they'd be operating one crew based, I think, out of Oskaloosa that would cover a wider area.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 732022, fixing date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Hopkins Properties LLC and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 732022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. This resolution also addresses the development in the Coles Outlot. In this case, this resolution also sets dates. It sets dates to consider a development agreement, which would provide the terms that were described above. The partial tax rebate would cover, would be extended over a period of eight years. Years one and two would have a 100% rebate of the tax increment, which is the taxes paid on the increased value after you subtract the debt service levies, the school physical improvement levy. And then for years three through eight, that'd be an 80% rebate of the increment. With the minimum assessment locking in the value at $2.1 million, that would project that we'd recover a $75,000 economic development grant over the eight years, but we would also make that grant paid at the time the project's completed. This resolution would set a public hearing for April 5th to consider that project.
Um, Zach, would, are they considering putting a light there? Because a lot of traffic happens right in that area.
So we've looked with engineering about what's appropriate for the entrance. A light is probably not appropriate, but we are looking at how we can make sure that we minimize conflict. If there is going to be an entrance that comes directly from the street, that entrance would need to be lined up directly with Venture Drive so that we don't have awkward turning movements that increase conflict. The site plan that's been reviewed so far would only have the same entrance that goes to Coles, and then from the Coles property, there'd be access to the outlot.
Okay, thank you.
The site plan also has those four buildings facing towards the highway, not facing Wildwood like Coles.
And the site plan is included in the development agreement, which was an exhibit, or will be an exhibit before the April 5th meeting.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember. Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-eight, twenty-twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to sign grant administration services and design services contracts for the Iowa Economic Development Community Development Block Grant, C D B G C V facade grant. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number seventy-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The city was awarded two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the Market Street COVID Relief Facade Program Community Development Block Grant. This was a special round of state funding to provide facade improvements for downtown areas that were impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This resolution would authorize the mayor to sign and execute a grant administration contract with Area Fifteen Regional Planning and a design services contract with Curtis Architecture. Area Fifteen has certified C D G, C D B G grant administrators who have insisted in administering previous C D B G grants, and Curtis Architecture prepared the pre-application design materials and would be sort of the logical design firm to continue the design services through completing the grant. The city's cost for this grant program will come from existing downtown development funding, and the building owners will also contribute a owner's investment share.
What's the percentage of that, do you know?
I don't think that I wrote that down. It's, I think, somewhere around twenty to twenty-five percent on the city side and twenty to twenty-five percent on the building owner's side.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-nine, twenty-twenty-two, adopting the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Policy Packet. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number seventy-nine, twenty-twenty-two.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Little bit of discussion earlier in the meeting about how accepting money that was federal funding, in this case, federal block grants that go to the state to distribute non-entitlement communities. So any community development block grant funds requires the city to adopt certain policies. And we've adopted all of these policies before, but over the years, the language has changed in these, so this would be readopting with the current language for the policies that were required to adopt. Those policies are a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, fair housing strategies, citizen participation requirements, procurement policy, a code of conduct, a prohibition on the use of excessive force, and an equal opportunity policy statement. And this resolution would just authorize the mayor to sign all of those statements or policies.
Any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty, twenty-twenty-two, adopting the policy statements governing the operation of the city of Atumwa's Blocks to Neighborhoods program. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number eighty, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Take it away, Zach.
All right, only two more. So this is kind of a fun one. Over the last probably three years, the city's offered a grant program that we call Healthy Neighbors. It's provided one-thousand-dollar grants to homeowners to make exterior home improvements, and we've always encouraged them to try to work together in forming applications where they work with their neighbors, so multiple places on the same block. We haven't been successful in getting that neighborhood spirit involved, and with a increased contribution from Legacy, this would change the program. We'd pivot to the name Blocks to Neighborhoods with the idea that we're going to require the neighborhood participation element. We will ask for only applications where at least three neighbors work together, but as an incentive, we're going to increase the award. So twenty-five hundred dollars and only a fifty percent required match. Used to be a thousand and dollar-for-dollar match. Now it's just fifty cents on the dollar, and we'll go up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So hopefully, the higher incentive will get folks bought in on the neighborhood-level idea. And we really are, and especially with Legacy contributing forty thousand dollars to this, they really are interested in the neighborhood-level aspect. It came out of the housing plan and the comprehensive plan that there's a need to develop neighborhood-level programming that supports home improvement so that we can make change block by block and not house by house. We want to do projects that are really going to have catalytic effect, but also raise values for everybody in a neighborhood. So in this resolution would adopt the policy statements that govern the program. We didn't actually have policy statements for the previous grant, but I think this would be a better way to sort of formalize how we'll handle these applications. It would establish a review team, which would include at least the community development director, a representative from Legacy Foundation, and a member of the council, and then it can have up to two other members who could come from city administration, nonprofit housing, development, construction trades, real estate. These grants would provide, I already said that, eligible activities would include exterior improvements such as paint siding windows, and we'll be also looking for creative projects and projects that utilize potentially improvements on a vacant lot in a neighborhood to create a sort of gathering place, as long as that's alongside home improvement projects. So we're looking to really encourage folks to get creative and look at what's there and how they can work together. The Legacy Foundation has offered matching funds for the program, and there is a request in the bonding to add sixty thousand dollars from the city to the program. Legacy's offered forty thousand dollars to match that. For year one, we also have a remaining thirty thousand dollars from the Healthy Neighbors Program, so we don't need the bond to operate the program in year one. That's why I'm putting this out and launching the program ahead of you actually looking at the bond, because we can at least secure the thirty thousand for year one and the twenty thousand for Legacy to make this a fifty thousand dollar year to launch the program.
So if I understand this right, three neighbors have to go together to apply, and they each have to upgrade their properties, correct?
Correct, and they can each get up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Any other questions for Zach?
I don't have a question, but I got a statement. Zach, I think this is amazing. I'm glad that you're working with Legacy Foundation on this. I'm glad that you guys have decided to expand this because as somebody that has, in the previous years, taken advantage of this program, like, it's amazing, it's awesome. I'm glad that it's been out there. You know, and for anybody that's watching or anybody that's listening, if you don't think your project would qualify, just come talk to Zach and find out. Never put it out of your mind just because you don't think it's going to help or whatever. But, you know, this is an amazing program, and I hope to see that all this money goes out the door to the community and they do some amazing projects with it.
Thank you.
Hasn't Legacy also agreed to help people with that whole application process?
Yes, so the Legacy Foundation uses a online grant application tool, and they're offering to allow us to use that tool as well. That'll allow us to move away from the paper application. It'll make the application easy to fill out online. It'll make them easier to review. There's a lot of nice features to having the application online, and I appreciate that they're offering that as well. And they've also been offering a lot of marketing help. It's got a nice, pretty logo and some things that we're going to be putting out as we launch the program.
That's a great program for neighborhood improvement. Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-one, twenty-twenty-two, fixing date for a public hearing on an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a community development block grant from the COVID-nineteen program for a project at three-oh-seven to three-oh-nine East Main Street. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number eighty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right.
Your final one.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is, again, that community development block grant special round of funding from COVID. If we were to get this project, that'd be at least three. We've already gotten the facade program. We've already got the one in the works for the food assistance. This would be a special program for converting unused or underused building space into housing. This would be for three-oh-seven to three-oh-nine East Main, and it would create three new apartments. The grant provides up to five-hundred thousand dollars per project, and this resolution would just set a public hearing to consider an application on April fifth. Three-oh-five, or three-oh-seven, three-oh-nine East Main is a building that the city's had a development agreement to work with the developer on, they've obtained a challenge grant, they've made significant investment in getting the first floor, they had to tear off the whole back half of that building, and it's coming along with a really neat new rear facade. The building was absolutely packed full of junk that had to be cleaned out over a long period of time. It's a really big project and a really big, really important building that was at one point very seriously at risk of coming apart, and it's now going to be, you know, available for use on the first floor and with this project, have the three apartments upstairs.
And the property owner is?
It's R D G Construction. R G, yep, sorry, R D G.
Rod Grums Construction.
Rod Grums.
Okay.
And he is getting it done. I was just there today. It's just looks amazing.
Any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you, Zach. We don't have any ordinances to approve this evening. This is a point in the council meeting where I'll ask if anyone in the audience has any other agenda items that they'd like to talk about that are not on tonight's agenda.
I would like to make a comment for a couple minutes if I could.
Okay.
Beginning of the, on the agenda, it talks about the high school signing the agreement, leasing the fields again this year, to give people a little bit of the history. For years, it was a lease for the Legion Ball Field and the Atumwa High School Ball Field, and the Legion was always on the top because Legion Ball was around long before Atumwa High School baseball, and Atumwa High School baseball started in nineteen-seventy-eight. But the Legion is at a place where they would like to switch the order so that they still remain on the lease. They don't have a ball team for the spring and summer, but they may have one this fall, so they want to make sure that they would be on there. And the other thing I'd like to recognize, a gentleman in the crowd tonight, by the name of John Hart, that's been down there in them Legion Ball Fields since the late, right around nineteen-sixty-eight, and was one of the founders of building that. And if you drive around Atumwa, he has taken care of that for fifty-four years. And it's one of them deals that he'll never be in front of the paper. He'll probably never get a street named after him, and he'd probably never get a plaque. But I'm here to thank you personally, John, for all them years of dedication to that ball field. It's one of the prettiest things in Atumwa. So I want to thank you for serving this great country, and I want to thank you for fifty-four years of dedicated service down there at the Legion Ball Field. Thank you.
I don't know, Mr. Hart. Would you mind standing up so we can recognize you? On behalf of the city council, thank you very much for your years of dedicated service and appreciate Doug for bringing that up. Any other topics that anyone wants to talk about that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. We have no petitions or communications unless Phil, you have something else? Okay, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our two meetings tonight.
Oh, yeah.